We do have one change order that falls under the category of administration. We added number three, approval of position guidelines of salary grade center for active living manager.
Move to approve with additions and close the agenda.
Okay. We have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Onto the consent agenda. We have city council meeting minutes of November 13th, 2023, Water and Light Commission meeting minutes of November 20th, 2023, Water and Light Commission meeting minutes of November 6th, 2023, Heron Lake Watershed Board meeting minutes of October 18th, 2023, Cross Culture Advisory Committee meeting minutes of October 17th, 2023, financial statements, municipal liquor store income statement for the period of January 1st through October 31st, 2023, Olson Park Statement of Revenue and Expenditures, Budget and Actual for the period of January 1st, 2023 through October 31st, 2023, Fieldhouse Statement of Revenue and Expenditures, Budget and Actual for the period of January 1st, 2023 and October through October 31st, 2023, council business, application for exempt from lawful gambling permit, Worthington YMCA, Worthington Area YMCA, 2024 off sale beer license renewals and bills payable.
Move to approve.
Motion is seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Onto city council business, public utilities. Good afternoon.
Evening.
What we have before you is proposed 2024 sewer service charges. Sewer service charge system was developed by staff, approved by the Water and Light Commission along with the 2024 wastewater budget at its November 20th meeting. Sewer service charge system is a city ordinance. It consists of two components, a usage charge and a connection charge. Basically take all expenditures and cost components and allocate those into either a user charge or connection charge. Major driver, we're looking at a increase this year and you can see that and how that affects things in your exhibit two. What we're proposing is the usage charge, an increase of 41.1 cents per thousand gallons or about 8.5 percent and an increase in the monthly connection charge of $3.96 or a little over 16 percent. The major driver for the rate increase is the inclusion of 844,000 in 2024 debt service to be collected through rates. In 2022, as you all know, we've got a major renovation, our municipal wastewater treatment plant going on. We started getting loan proceeds from Public Facilities Authority through the Clean Water Revolving Fund back in 2021. 2022, we made an interest payment on that. That was 100 percent covered by reserves. In 2023, the debt service, 33 percent was rate, new rate payer money and 67 percent was reserves. In 2024, we're going to collect 50 percent of total anticipated debt service in rates and 50 percent will be covered by reserves. So that actually what that means is in 2024, we'll be collecting $300,800 more for debt service than we did in 2023. The impact, like I said, exhibit two, on an average user, which we consider to be about 4,000 gallons a month, sewer charge would be a $5.60 increase or about 12.75 percent. If you recall, last year, we had a fairly significant increase. We came in, everything was between 21 and 22 percent. And I indicated to you at that time, my hope was to cut that in about half this year. Didn't, didn't quite make half, but, but we got close. So we did get half, less than half in some areas. The larger users weren't impacted as much because of the, larger part of the increase was in the fixed monthly connection charge. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, on behalf of the Water and Light Commission, I request that the city council adopt the 2024 sewer service charge system by passing the resolution in exhibit four.
I would move to approve.
Second one. Okay, Steve?
Just a quick question for you, Scott. Do you anticipate in coming years that you'll be able to continue to pay 50 percent of that bond or loan payment through reserves or is that going to?
No, no, we're gonna, we're gonna have to work our way away from that. What the long-term, you know, strategic planning looked like this year, it looks like we might have a similar increase in next year in that 10 percent range. Then we can see some light at the end of the tunnel. 2026 looks like possibly 8 percent, then 7 percent in 2027, 4 percent in 2028, and then we should be there. And that is, those increases would be covering 100 percent of the debt service is what it looks like.
Starting next year?
No, starting next year, we'd probably be looking at about another 10.
Was still a 50/50 of reserves?
Next year, 2024, 2025, projecting another 10 percent increase could potentially, and we are using reserves. We're spending more than we're bringing in, in those ensuing years. We have not secured, you know, construction isn't done yet. We won't have a final am work schedule until all funds have been dispersed. I'm hoping that that will happen sometime in 2024. Then the plan is next fall, the Water and Light Commission, we're going to look at our existing reserves and potentially create a debt service reserve whereby we'll dedicate a certain amount of money and we'll just ladder that down and collect more end rates and utilize less reserves and we'll just run those reserves down to zero. So doing what we can to try to, you know, stabilize things. And in anticipation of, you know, incurring this debt, we did start raising rates back in probably 2020, so.
And just refresh everyone's memory, that was up to a $34 million loan?
Just a shade under 32, I believe, is what we're authorized for right now. I anticipate we will probably draw between 29 and 30 million dollars. I think probably $2 million less. And that loan was a 20-year term, 1 percent interest. So maybe if we can find a way to spend the other $2 million, we should probably do it and take money.
At 1 percent?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, we do have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
Okay, we have city council, public works.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. The rebid for the Cal Improvement Project were opened on November 16th, 2023. There were four bids submitted in this round of bidding. As you remember, we rejected the first round. We only had one bid. Their exhibit one in your packet is the bid tabs. There were two parts to each bid, a bid for the base amount, which is the water damage covered under our insurance policy from the roof leak, and an alternate number one amount, which was to add meeting room amenities to the project. The low base bid was received from Robert W. Carlstrom Company Incorporated in the amount of $298,000 and their alternate number one bid was $183,500. Staff, along with the justice from the League of Minnesota Cities, reviewed the bids and feel that our best option at this time would be to accept the low base bid from Carlstrom Company and reject the alternate number one bid at this time. Carlstrom Company was contacted and they are comfortable with this option. Staff will be looking at other options for adding the meeting rooms additions at a future date. Council action is requested to accept the base bid from Robert Carlstrom Company in the amount of 298,000 and reject alternate one.
Chad? So let me ask the question, because we have one bid that would be considerably under for both jobs.
Yep.
What the base and the alternate bid were together? If we were satisfied with that number, do we have any rights or could we take that number? Just asking the question.
Yes, we could. The League of Minnesota Cities is only going to pay the 298,000. So it's our, it's our opinion that we take the 298,000 bid from Carlstrom, get it back to its original condition and then we re, whether we quote or bid for the additional portion of it. The original part has to be done first anyway.
Yep.
So, yeah. It didn't quite turn out kind of the way we wanted to, but it would cost the city more if we, if we took that option. They are, of course, combined the low bid.
What did the bid come in at first?
300, well, we had one bid and it came in at, oh, I'm wrong.
About 360,000, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was about.
For the base bid.
Yeah, yep, yep.
The base bid was 358,000 for the original.
And the alternate was 65?
64, 65, somewhere in the vicinity.
Counsel, any discussion, questions? Must be as good as it's going to get, I would imagine.
Yeah, this is the second time we bid it. We gave them some different options on how they could bid online and in person because we thought maybe there were local contractors that would rather bid in person and that's kind of the way it turned out. And the, the League of Minnesota Cities will only pay what the low number for the base bid was, so.
That's just to get it back to?
Yep, get it back. That is the water damage that we had. That's to repair it and get it back to its original condition. And then it is our intention, like I said, to add meeting rooms for Jill and stuff like that, but it'll be after we get this completed, then we'll, we'll, we already got the plans made, so.
Better option for local bids for?
Well, we'll probably just, we'll probably just reach out and do some quotes because it'll be under the threshold, so we'll try to find some local contractors and of course Tri-State will get an option because they were the little alternate.
I'd move to accept the base bid from Robert Carlstrom Company in the amount of 298,000 and reject the ultimate or alternate number one.
Second. Okay, motion is seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
This next one is an amendment to Minnesota State DOT Aeronautics Grant. The city of Worthington was notified earlier this summer that they had been awarded a Minnesota Department of Transportation Aeronautics Grant to replace the roof on a Worthington Municipal Airport maintenance hangar. Staff received a state DOT grant for the project design and construction portions of the project. After construction was started, there was a change order approved for the project in the amount of $18,235. The state of Minnesota DOT grant amendment will fund 70 percent of the change order cost equalling $12,764 and our local share will be 5,471. Attached is an amendment to the grant agreement, exhibit two in your, in your packet. A council action is requested to amend the state grant and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign any necessary agreements.
I'd move to amend the original agreement with the attached change. Okay, we have a motion and second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and second. Any further discussion?
What exactly was the change?
The change order was when we got the old roof off, the whole bunch of the sheeting boards and stuff needed to be replaced and there were some rafters that were broke. So they went in and repaired those and put a bunch of new sheeting boards and stuff on. This was all sent through the state of Minnesota and got approval from them earlier this summer and we wanted to wait and make sure we didn't have any other change orders before we did the amendment. We're, we're just about done with the project. All we have is a couple of things on a punch list to do and that's done, so.
Just curious, thank you.
Yep, no, that's what it was.
It's on page two there, yeah, in the, under the construction. The roof sheeting and trust repair.
Okay, we do have a motion and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Thank you.
Yep, and we have a.
All right. Yes. Okay. Moving on to administration business. First item is a second reading, the proposed ordinance relating to stormwater utility rates. As you recall, at the last meeting, we presented the first reading of the ordinance that would adjust the stormwater utility rates for 2024. Complete copy, the ordinance was in the November 13 council agenda and packet. Council has requested to give a second reading to the proposed ordinance.
Okay, we have a motion to approve second reading. Second, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
All right, next item is a resolution accepting a grant for the city of Worthington Center for Active Living. The city and Center for Active Living received a grant in the amount of $51,015 from the Minnesota River Area Agency on Aging. Grant period is from January 1st to December 31st, 2024. The Center for Active Living was granted this renewal opportunity to continue with the good work that was started and invested this current year in what the Center for Active Living Director Jill Cooper has called the Good Life Grant. Under the Education and Training category, continue to offer technology classes with the machines that were bought in 2022 in the investment year and that included 16 iPads and 14 laptops and continue to, the partnership with Minnesota West for technology instructions to use these new computers. Also continue the Raised Garden Program and have local musicians come in and play and talk about the, their music. New this year will be some art instruction, history of Worthington discussions with local experts, mural, mural work on the lower level stairway. And under the health promotion, they'll have the YMCA exercise instructors come multiple times a week to teach classes. There's also some money included for translation services, Wi-Fi, website fees, advertising, and a portion of the director's salary. Excited to continue to offer our active older adult population these amenities and truly live the good life. Council actions requested to approve the resolution. That is included in, note that it's exhibit number two. And if anyone has any questions, Jill Cooper is here to address them.
This one is, it's gone down from the original one in grant. Does the future look decent for any more grant dollars to become available, to maintain a level? I'm just wondering, you're building all kinds of good things. Are we going to be able to keep doing them at any sort or is it something we're going to have to look at funding, you know, more this way or is it going to be available on grants?
Yeah, so that's a good question. So a couple of years ago, when I, when I got my first grant for 142 and some change, that's what they call like the investment year. So grants are cyclical, so that first grant is usually your top dollar and then the following years are to continue to support the, you know, the first year. So last year or this year, my grant was like $40 more than what we'll have next year. So this money really supports the investment year, so of course, like the laptops, all that stuff. So once we get out of this cycle of grants, instead of a renewal when we reapply for a brand new grant, yeah, there's lots of funding out there. I have some really great resources, a lot of good connections for money outside of Minra. There's a lot of statewide dollars. So of course, I'm sure a lot of you know, as we age, loneliness is a big problem. So there's a lot of money out there to fight loneliness as we age, to encourage exercise. So yeah, there's lots of good grant money out there.
Okay.
Good question.
Good. Has it helped with bringing more people in your?
Yeah, so this grant has been incredible. I bet I, I'm sure, I, I would say I get one to two new members every day now, where when I started, we were getting maybe a couple of members a week, maybe, but yeah, we're getting new people in all the time, so it's been great.
Good. Anybody else have any questions? Move to adopt the resolution.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
You, Jill.
Yep.
Next case item is approval of the position guidelines and salary grade for the Center for Active Living Manager. As discussed at the city council budget planning sessions, administration recommended terminating the agreement with the Worthington YMCA in managing the Center for Active Living and taking operations management and staffing of the Cal as a city function. The operations budget was included in the preliminary budget approved by council on September 11th, 2023. The total 2024 operations budget is $147,636, which is slightly more than was presented in September based on updated salary and benefits information. This is an increase of approximately $34,226 over the 2023 budget. The Cal manager is classified as a non-exempt grade five, which has a 2024 minimum hourly wage of $24.50 an hour. Position guidelines and budget are included and I did bring an amended position guidelines that was handed out prior to the council meeting.
Chad? So as we have been over the last few years on different positions as they come about or are altered and changed, they've gone through the, what I would say is maybe your new scrutiny as to classification and stuff. You've done this with this one, so it kind of fits the mold now of where we should be opposed to. We're going to approve something and then see a change again in the next year or two?
Yeah, so when, when we classified this one is, you know, it's based on the, the current compensation plan, the criteria that we, that we grade and score them on. And the other thing is we, we also compare them to other positions within the city to make sure that it's in line with other comparable responsible positions, so.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve this. A second.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Counsel, engineering.
Hello, everybody. First item, order preparation of feasibility report on proposed improvement, Second Avenue. Exhibit one is resolution ordering the preparation of a feasibility report on segment of Second Avenue from 12th Street to 13th Street for street reconstruction improvements. The project would include improving the described street by regrading base reconstruction, resurfacing and curb and gutter. The improvements will be proposed to be assessed to abutting property owners. Upon receipt of the report, council will require to order a hearing on the proposed improvement. Staff recommends that council adopt the resolution in exhibit one.
Was this just not done with the current project that just completed? Correct. Because of a timeline issue or what was, why wasn't that, and this is just, I mean, for understanding?
So this part of Second Avenue didn't need it to, the utility didn't need to reconstruct it. So I think that's the biggest reason that we didn't include that part and.
The part that they did was state aid built and this part is not state aid.
Gotcha.
Correct.
Okay. I, I just figured there had to been some reason why a one block extension of what we just did wasn't included in that and I wanted to understand a little bit more as to why.
Two different funding sources.
Gotcha. Or even moving it farther, you know, going on to like 14th or something like that. I know that whole intersection on 13th is, is tough.
Is it going to include the intersection at, at 13th and Second? That's an ugly intersection.
Not the whole intersection, no. Not, not at this moment, yep. But from 13 going north, the whole utility is redone, so we can go anytime there and then include that in the CIP in next couple of years if it was requested.
Okay, yeah, otherwise the second, I know that they've, it's got my tumors and concrete off and on and.
Yep. The major part of this project will be reconstructing the curb and gutter part on the north, south side with that corporation, the gas station, the old gas station. They currently don't have any curb and gutter, so that will be our main point to redoing that whole.
Have to worry about ground?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, as far as contaminations?
No.
Maybe not?
I, we didn't find any report on those, so that shouldn't be.
They'll have the tanks out anyway.
There shouldn't be any problem for contamination.
Okay, counsel, any questions?
Move to approve the hearing.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Second one, another order preparation of feasibility report on Church Avenue. Exhibit two is a resolution ordering the preparation of feasibility report on a segment of Church Avenue from Oxford Street to Clary Street for street reconstruction improvement, improving the described street by recreating base reconstruction and resurfacing. The improvements will be proposed to be assessed to abutting property owners. Upon receipt of the reports, council will be requested to order a hearing on the proposed improvements. Staff recommends that council adopt the resolution in exhibit two.
I do this every day, very necessary.
Is this the road and the curb and gutter too?
Not curb and gutter, just the road part, yep.
Okay.
Curb and gutter was in a pretty decent shape. Will replace spot repairs on curb and gutters. There's some bad ones, but most of them were pretty decent shape.
Move to approve feasibility report.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Resolution of support, local road improvement program grant application. The city of Worthington is in the process of applying for local road improvement program grant fund from the Minnesota Department of Transportation. The proposed project includes construction of the service road from Spring Avenue to Service Drive connecting to Highway 60. The LRIP will provide grant funding up to one and a half million dollars of construction cost. The fund may not be used for right-of-way acquisition, engineering, public or private utilities. The program application requires a resolution of support from the city, city council. Staff is requesting council adopt the resolution shown in exhibit three.
Where is Service Drive at?
It's in front of Graham.
In front of Graham Tire.
Oh.
And there's a little stub out on the southbound on 60 where, when they were reconstructing that 60, there's a little stub going into that road.
And this would connect up to that?
Yep.
That intersection that has been?
Up to Spring?
No.
No, to the service road.
To the service road, okay, just that little spur there then.
Yeah.
They have to use, move probably quite a few utilities if it goes between those properties and the trailer park. I know that's what they were, when they put that in, that was what they were looking at extending that all the way over to Spring, just because if there's any long semi-traffic that they would not make that corner or, you know, going on to Highway 60.
The, there's a service road and service drive. The drive is the north part that's not paved yet.
Right.
And that, that's in the future project. This one does not include that part, so it will be.
Intersection there is all?
Yes, and then it will be.
Did it get to it?
Yes.
Okay, then just patching the holes.
Yep, yep.
So is there long-term intent then to close off the access that, that leads directly into the, like the state shed lot? Or, I mean, if they're, if they're talking about access off the, off a 60 or the roundabout there coming into that service road?
No, I think that road is still necessary from that Oxford to coming in, so we really haven't. haven't considered to close any entrance.
I could see that eliminating some traffic anyways, it's coming into, of course, the right turn is okay. It's just when you're crossing traffic, you know, it's all right turn, hard to get on.
We'll have to see.
Yeah.
Move to adopt.
All right. We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Approved Task Order 24 with Bolton and Menk to provide professional service for LRIP grant application. Task Order 24, showing in exhibit four, provides professional service for the grant application for the service road project proposed for 2025. The cost is not to exceed $7,000. The task order covers essential components, including analysis of right-of-way acquisition, gathering letters of support from public and business owners, and preliminary analysis data complication, completion. The LRIP application deadline is December 8. Staff recommends the approval of Task Order 24 with Bolton and Menk.
Move to approve. Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thanks.
Thanks, Goo. Okay, committee reports. I don't have anything other than Representative Folgman had sent me a text anyways. If anybody's interested, they have this all in Minneapolis or something. It's actually a book signing for Liz Collin. It's at the Jackson Theater Thursday night. It actually starts at 5:30. So I'll just throw that out there. It's been on Facebook and all that. And that's a book that she has written anyways. It's now a documentary. It's about an hour and 40 minutes long. That's all I've got. Larry, anything?
I have nothing.
Okay, Amy?
No report.
Chris?
No report.
Okay, Helena?
No report.
Chad?
Um, last week, or not last week, week before, attended the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Fall Meetings and heard discussions on everything from.
Sick time?
Environmental justice to sick pay and leave time changes that are happening in the state, cannabis laws, and things of that sort. Also got the chance while there by a phone to speak to Congressman Finstead and really push the efforts with Coalition on our behalf in the upcoming session for 2024, and with the congressman in DC for real usable workforce housing dollars that can actually be used. And we have stressed very well with our meetings with the Housing Committee in their meetings here, which was heard very well. And the Coalition wants us to keep working on that. And so we made it clear to Congressman Finstead that you can throw a bunch of dollars out there, but if there are a bunch of really asinine things attached to it, it's not worth the paper it's printed on. So make it usable, make it real for greater Minnesota cities to actually use. Otherwise, we're just going to watch people continue to walk out of our communities and go across state borders, or just flock to the metro. And we're too vital of an area here in Worthington to let that happen. So I think we stressed that well in those communications. And that's going to be the plan going forward with that. Also attended the comp plan meeting a week ago, and our next step in moving forward in the comprehensive plan and what things are done. They heard all of our talks and discussions we had on shortening down some of the missions and things like that. And all that was done and well received by the committee. And the next step then is the focus is on those five initiatives that are moving forward. So that was all I had.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Goo. And the other thing about Congressman Finstead is he indicated that he is going to make a personal trip to Worthington and asked that his staff be in touch with us so that we can make the arrangements. There's no date set at this point, but well, he made the commitment to be here in person. On the 2024 budget, we are getting that really wrapped up. Made a lot of progress over the weekend on that, so that is looking good. And while it's not yet finalized to present to the council, it looks like the tax rate is going to be pretty much the same as it is current. So there should be no increase and maybe even a slight decrease in the tax rate for 2024. Reminder, the special meeting for Wednesday at 7 o'clock, and it is at the high school, right, in, in the band room?
Yep.
And we, we sold two more Cecily lots. Have signed purchase agreement on two lots and earnest money. Soon as we get the mayor and clerk to sign off on, on that purchase agreement, we'll get it over to Noble's Abstract and we'll get it, get the closing started and scheduled on that, so.
Those two that, that came back?
One of them was that came back, and one was adjacent to it. But so that's all I have to report.
Okay. Anybody else have anything?
I would defer.
Motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.